All meeting to order. Everyone will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the good flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's what happens when you have coats that look the same.
The sheriffs stole my jacket. I lost control there.
Good evening, everyone.
I looked over and saw Jim engulf my jacket.
I was like, this sure does feel large. All right.
Oh dear.
Moving right along, we have one addition to the agenda and that is closed at the end of the meeting. That would be our last item. Are there any others?
Move to approve as am I.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Passed unanimously. All right, special presentations and appearances. Lifesaving award, Chris Cord, ECC Director.
I'm here to present TJ Lutner with an award for excellent job he did on providing telephonic CPR instructions on two different calls in one day.
Very good.
This certificate is awarded to TJ Lutner. His actions were directly responsible for two lifesaving acts on September 18th, 2020, and administered T CPR instructions until responders arrived unseen to get further aid ultimately resulting in saving lives.
Picture.
Of course. Thank you, guys.
Yes, it is. Glad to be for your service. All right, consent agenda?
motion approved.
Second? Okay, discussion. Item D under consent agenda is for speed and safety study on Marquee Road. I got a request the other day from a resident down there to have the sheriff's office set up radar because they had people going through a 35 mile an hour zone, running 80 miles an hour on average. So absolutely a needed. Anything else on that? All right, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Passing unanimously. Under new business, approval of the use of a cooperative contract for an access control system in the Gordon and Sedgwick buildings in the Zamas.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. In front of you we have a memo to get permission to procure an access control system through a cooperative contract. In direct response to the COVID-19 pandemic, an access control system is needed for the Gordon and Safety Buildings at this time. The systems will provide a higher level of security with the ability to monitor, maintain, and be managed in-house by our department of public works. It's the same system that we are using in the warehouse right now with Architectural Products of Virginia. Eventually, we have it in the CIP to add to other county facilities, the same type of access control system. The, for the Sedgwick Building, the access control will be in the front door and the registrar's door. It won't be where the library doors are. And then for the Gordon Buildings, it will be the front and rear access to the building and along with the glass door on the second floor and steam administration going down the hallway to convenience. Staff proposes utilizing a VASTUP contract with Architectural Products of Virginia, which is our access control vendor currently. The system in the Gordon Building will cost approximately $17,000,968 and $48,553 in the Sedgwick Building. Funding for this project is available in the first round of CARES Act funds. It's recommended that the board authorize staff to use the VASTUP cooperative contract with APB for an access control system in the Gordon and Sedgwick Buildings. Any questions?
Question. How does it maintain a higher level of security? What does it do to maintain a higher level of security?
Are you referring to the Gordon Building or the other building?
Either one.
Yes.
So the Gordon Building, just to control movement, just to restrict people can only come see treasurer, commissioner, or go up and see admin. Kind of restricts that access down the hall through the back stairwell. Sedgwick Building, it's going to keep people from accessing the back stairwell up into the voter registration office and parking racks and also some of these server equipment in the Sedgwick Building.
Just quick question. Does this meet the state fire codes?
It will, yes.
It will?
Yes.
Okay.
Are these projects that have to be completed this calendar year? Is that, is that doable?
Last I checked with the vendor, it currently is.
Where is this access control again, in this building?
So it's going to be the front door, the rear door, the stairwell doors, and the glass partition door up in the second floor hallway.
And what does that actually mean?
Yeah.
So it'll be just card readers like the other courthouse one we want at the public safety building. So staff will get access cards. So just staff will be able to access the door.
Okay. The public will still be able to access the commissioner's office?
Yes.
And the treasurer's office?
Yes.
It sounds like that's it.
And the admin office upstairs. So they'll go up the elevator to the admin office.
Okay, so the elevator now can be isolated to exclude this floor?
No, they're able to still use the public restroom down here.
Okay, in that case, we're wasting their money. Man standing right there that needs more security than anybody else, even if it's only for three months. If we can't control that door there, and that's part of the reason I asked if we meet the fire codes. We're going to put in an access security system if they can still access the basement and use these restrooms without a... I'm in favor of it, but I think we need to get it one step further so that we're...
So what you're saying, we need an access control on that door between this thing and backwards the...
Right, something needs to occur because right now, you can come down this basement, walk straight back and go out the back door. I'm all for this, but it's somewhat useless if you can access...
But that's just the one door that would, because you've already got control over the back door.
Right.
But you need a control over this door right out here.
Correct.
That would give the security of the 911 center and emergency.
Exactly.
Is that not intended currently?
Not currently, probably not.
But is that something that reasonably could be part of this contract? It's adding one more control point?
Yes, we could make a change order and go in and do that.
I would say that that absolutely has to be part of our approval on this.
Now, the second question, when you say access, does you just have anybody who has a card can get access anywhere, or are there going to be specific places that you can and can't access with a card?
Each card is assigned doors that it can access, so you can control how.
Okay, so, so the door has a, does it go back to some central system for...
Yes, there's a central panel that it talks to.
So someone who's going to have access to, who should have access to all the doors, their card would be coded to open all the doors?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Well. I question whether this is needed. Seems like to me we're using an atom bomb to kill a flea. For instance, the back door is already... The public can't come in the back door, so why do we need to do anything to the back door? And by the way, there's another weak point, which is if somebody, if they come in the back door, then they can get in, if they come into the clerk's office, then they can go down the hallway and get into the stairwell. So that's another point here.
Is there any way that we can...
Can we, we can proceed with the Sedgwick Building if there's no issues with the Sedgwick Building, because these are two separate proposals. We can proceed with the Sedgwick Building and then have them come back with certain different...
Where would the Sedgwick Building be again?
Just mainly the front entrance and then around the back for the stairwell entrance to control access on those two points, the library.
The front entrance.
The front entrance in the Sedgwick Building?
Well, I mean, people have to get in there. The public has to get in there.
Correct, it's not going to be locked during the day. It's just going to be integrated in the access control system with what we have placed.
Are there any other places that are secure in the Sedgwick Building? I mean, if they need to get to the registrar's office or social security office or, I mean, social services office?
Okay, let me ask this question. Is this so that employees would be using a card reader versus keys?
Yes.
Okay. So it's not a, even though it would help serve for safety, this is not really a safety upgrade. It is more of a employee access control and upgrade.
Yeah, that'd be, I guess that'd be more accurate.
And these are monies that were carved out of the CARES Act.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think the thought was that we would be better able to segment public spaces in the building to mitigate people moving around while we're trying to keep people segmented and separated.
Well, the front door would be locked and you'd have access through the front door of the Sedgwick Building.
Correct.
After hours.
It would be locked after hours and open like in this country.
But you could still open with a card.
Right, yes.
Okay, so that gives after-hours access for staff. But people are going to go in there. Any other doors locked or a key?
So the glass door upstairs here, every time an employee wants to go through that door, they're going to have to run the card?
Yes, yes. Rather than having a key...
Well, it's not kept locked.
Well, it's not kept locked because it's highly inconvenient, but if we had a card system, that would be additional security for that whole part of the building and employees could use the card to get to the restroom and visit other employees. That's the thinking.
If it's on the front door of the building, how is the public going to get into commissioner's office, to the windows of the commissioner's office or the windows of the treasurer?
Those doors will be unlocked, scheduled to be unlocked during the day.
Okay, so once again, this is more replacing employee keys with access cards than it is a safety and security. It enhances the safety and security, but that is not the primary effect of this.
Correct.
All right.
Is this, is this something that will be, I mean, this is something, there's going to be some kind of ongoing contract with this company?
No, this is just, we're using the VASTUP contract to procure the needed hardware for the system.
Okay, let me ask a related but unrelated question. If there were an active shooter situation, is this system capable of being enacted?
I honestly don't know the answer. I could find out.
Can you remotely lock in?
Right, and the reason that I'm asking that is there's currently a research group from the state on active shooter security. I can see where this would tie into. I think it would be good as a first step in securing our buildings, but it is not, that's all it is, is a first step. It is CARES Act money and I understand what the restrictions on those are, so...
I guess, it seems to me that if there are other choices of doors to provide access to control, one we mentioned is just outside here, but in the Sedgwick Building, seems to me that the access control almost has to be the door entering the registrar's office, the door entering Parks and Recs, and the door entering social services. Because all the others, during the day at least, and for some evening events, are going to be open, and so you're having really, you're not really adding any security. And so maybe the money at a minimum can be redirected toward the, and the one upstairs, the glass door upstairs would be another example, and maybe even the back door of the second story. So maybe what needs to happen is a little bit of a rethinking toward, you know, limiting public access to employee spaces.
What is the timeframe that would be needed once this contract is awarded?
I think the lead time, last I checked, was about eight weeks on materials.
If the contract is awarded, is that technically...
What we've heard the guidance on is if we were to enter a contract that had, you know, eight weeks as a reasonable delivery and we executed it, so the final conclusion of the work was not too far past the deadline, we had encumbered the funds, obligated the funds, we would be okay. That's what the guidance has been. You know, nothing's certain until it's certain, but I think that if you execute contracts on the last day, thinking that something's going to get delivered that day, they're going to say, well, that's not reasonable. So where's the sliding scale between now and then? It's hard to answer.
I realize that our next meeting...
That's the November Lake of the Woods.
Lake of the Woods. I think if we did the research on this and got a little farther with it, I think we could add that to our agenda at the lake. Is that...
And I would like to see then a more detailed description of what actually is going to be done.
Just to add a couple things. So, I haven't done a good job conveying the whole picture. Eventually, we like to tie all the county facilities into this same system. This is the same system that's also been in the public safety building. And one of the added benefits of the card readers is not only you're taking away a key, but you have, then you have record of who is entering and leaving the building because that card is tied to a certain employee.
Right.
Whereas with a key, you hand a key to somebody new. So there are other benefits to this, and I do think that Chairman Crozier got it right. This is just a step towards what we ultimately want to do with the building, if that helps at all. Eventually, it'd be nice to practically have every door in the access control system, but that's costly and that's what they're trying.
I'm not sure you need it. If you've got a certain area that's all employees and doesn't have public in it, I think that's...
Would there be a consensus to defer this to the November meeting and...
I would prefer to do that.
Have more information and have it beforehand.
I don't think you're going to have time. You only got six weeks left.
That is the issue. You're pushing that window that, that's an uncertain window.
It's something that I believe is good and needed, and maybe it was the understanding or lack of understanding. Because we do need to have a modern access control system that protects everybody.
So, Mr. Chairman, if putting the system in the buildings is something that needs to be done, but it's really just, you would like some more thought about the particular doors, we can certainly move forward with the contract to put the systems in and do the doors we can agree on, but agree that we might at a later point in time...
Change.
Pick some different doors or add them in. That wouldn't be as much of a cost consideration.
I think even in the first round, you need to add that door.
We can certainly do that.
Mr. Johnson, would you be any more comfortable with that, or would you still like to...
That's fine, I just, I think we need to be a little bit more clear about what we're trying to accomplish and then look at it, because if this is to replace keys or a touchpad, then I'm not that impressed by it. You know, and I really hate to see us start segmenting our buildings down into cubicles and every cubicle has got, you know, required secret code to go through or something. I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm fine with taking it back up in November.
All right. Do you have to do health?
That's a consensus, I'm fine.
I will move to approve.
Move, to approve, moving forward with this or moving it to the November?
No, moving it, moving forward with this, with putting that and adding that door to their original plan. And you're also saying with some later decisions about exactly which doors? Which other doors? So we place a contract, but we recognize that we might be selecting different doors as we... I'll second that.
How is, how is the, do we know how, I mean, if we say we want something on that door, how is that, what has to be done? Does the door have to be replaced, or is it something that...
I'd have to get the vendor in and take a look at it. I do know most likely, and I have to check the DWs, it would have to be tied into the fire alarm system because it's an address from both ways. So it has to unlock when the fire alarm goes off.
And then you end up having some sort of wiring going from that door to your central system, or do you already have that?
It would go to the control panel, and the control panel would then have...
But my question is, are these going to be put on the existing doors? Is this some kind of unit that's put on the existing door, or does the whole door have to be replaced?
Most of them, they're going on the existing doors. The one upstairs, the door itself, not the frame or the anything around it, is being replaced. This one, I'd have to go and get the vendor to come take a look at it, and hopefully we'd be able to use the same door.
And we do have a new fire alarm system in the building, correct? So that portion of it is already taken care of. All right, in that case, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, and we will definitely get input back and forth on this before installation. Thank you. All right, next one is approval of the design concepts for the Gateway Signs Project. Landis.
Do you guys have access to the packet so you can see what we're speaking about? Good evening, Chairman Crozier.
Yeah, if you want, just flip to that first design concept, Allison, that would be fun. That's a good place to leave it for right now.
Good evening, Chairman Crozier and our public board members. I'm here tonight to update you on our progress of where we are with the Orange County CIP project 1092, Orange County Entrance Signs. We are presently in the process of a final concept of sign design, and we also are looking at final renderings and estimates on final concept construction. Those are estimates that we've gained after seeing you all at the work session in February to get an idea of cost and site locations, so we can try to move forward with construction grade plans for the actual signs and for the locations that we render accessible, we want to see being used. Currently, the FY '20, when it's closed, the CIP will be funded at $103,005. Want me to go over our highlights of where we've been? You guys are pretty clear on how we've gotten here.
Unless somebody else, I believe so.
I don't want to bore you with things, you've already gotten your packet. I did do some math on the estimates that we got from land planning and design. They reached out to vendors that they've used in the past to ask for a little bit of an idea of an estimate like we had asked about in our February work session. And that estimate's connected to our packet here. They were able to narrow down with a 20% overage or contingency, an idea of an estimated cost per sign. Based on your guidance, we were able to narrow down the signs to two concepts, a monument, which is our larger style, and a breakaway. Because we had, you were looking at possibly three options there when we met last in February, the work session, and you all had requested that we try to streamline it, so we would have a little more consistent look across the county and not have so many different sizes at the different locations. So on our first page there, we've got our schematic designs, so I'd like to kind of throw that out to you all to see how you all feel about what we've landed on. It's much smaller for the monument size. We've got a two to three foot wide plant base with stone stack look, a timber run board that would then hold the sign to give a look of it kind of hanging from there with just a nice clean simple palette in Orange County with our seal and established 1734. And then our breakaway signs, which you have to use on specific roadways, nice clean look, but similar concept in profile. And those will be a 3D effect. They would have some depth to them. Renderings don't give that as much of an option. I also have Bill McNeek here from Land Planning and Design Associates. He's the president of Land Planning and Design Associates, so he can address any questions specifically that we might have technically wise that I can't answer for you guys tonight.
Lord, what's the size on the breakaway sign? What is the size of the sign itself? It's, it might be in here somewhere, I didn't catch it as I was...
Oh my goodness, you have the width on that?
Yeah, it's going to be similar to the other one. It's about, you know, four, four and a half foot wide, a similar height for you.
By like six to eight foot?
Yeah, it's overall, it's a very large panel.
So four feet by three feet high is the sign itself, you're saying?
The actual sign itself.
The panel, right, yeah, okay.
A little detail, all that out, obviously, and get a rest on, you know, just the dimensions. You know, the monument side could not be in a little larger scale or could be a little smaller depending on what's going to work best on the sites.
Right. Any other thoughts, concerns? Do we need to look at anything further when it comes to design? We landed on this based on much feedback from tourism advisory committee, through our survey that we did, through public connection there, the survey we provided for the public for response, and then some feedback from you guys at the work session. connection there, the survey we provided for the public for response, and then some feedback from you guys at the work session.
Just, what, let's go back to the contingency. These are estimates, and that's why there's a twenty percent contingency?
Yeah, they, they really wanted to be just really careful about when they did those estimates on, from those vendors, to be able to kind of add in any of that possible unknown. Because, and that was also from June, so, I mean, obviously, we always have a timeline on our estimates, unfortunately.
Okay, that, that's.
That gives you a little bit, it gives us a much better idea, because we have no idea leading in.
Right.
Where we'd be at at all.
Not a problem.
Because we don't have a lot of lumber on there, we might be okay.
Yeah.
Right now.
Any other, any questions?
Any other questions on the design concept? Or any feedback on that that we might need to, to, to look at before we move forward with those construction plans based on this design?
Are you still working the exact locations? I know, Mark, you had a, a question about location.
Yeah, and we, we're gonna be addressing number five on location. We've gone back to land planning design and asked for an amendment to our proposal to have them relook at Route thirty-three and looking at possibly some private or other options when it comes to geographically and, and sightlines to be able to use to possibly get us close to the border. So we're gonna be looking at that. And we can obviously do that also at any of our other locations that we deem necessary. Based on costs, when we were trying to look at traffic plus type of sign that was viable for that roadway, I looked at the thought of trying to bring costs down a little bit after we got a feel for what the monuments were gonna cost us per estimated. So some of our roadways were able to carry a monument south, but they don't carry enough traffic per se. So I dropped those back to breakaways to kind of help, you know, not necessarily have as much cost involved because that roadway doesn't know enough traffic per se compared to the other destinations or roadways that do. So we've got four major roadways that we were wanting to do the monument signs on. It's got a lot of traffic on them. And then it kind of, it kind of drops from there. But cost savings based on traffic count, Route five twenty-two coming from Culpeper, Route two thirty-one coming from Louisa, Route five twenty-two coming from Louisa border, and Route twenty coming from Albemarle, were all a decision to break to a breakaway sign versus monuments because we could have had them, but that was just, traffic counts weren't necessarily deemed it necessary to have a monument south style sign. You can always change that, but we were just trying to be cost effective.
Sign number two, have, have you all been working closely with both Germana and the Germana Foundation? Because I know the Germana Foundation is in the process of getting ready to put up a rather large monument sign. And then Germana obviously has one at their entrance. Have you worked with them as well on the location of that?
Tim is, uh, Tim Sefin, the director there, is part of our tourism advisory committee. So he has been with us along this entire process. I think we're gonna be within the, in the, in the sense of VDOT easement, so we won't even necessarily be intruding on their signage that they're putting up. But I can always double check to make sure we're not overlapping.
It's more of a concern of landing site distance for drivers.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So I can double check, but he has been a part of the process, so he hasn't noted any concerns so far.
Would move that we approve the design concept. Let's move ahead with the rest of the process.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passing unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. Mr. Simpson, the emergency extension of the continuity of government operations ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As noted in your packet, on April twenty-eighth, you all adopted an ordinance that we are referring to as the continuity of government operations ordinance, which temporarily modified public meeting, public hearing practices in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. The language in the ordinance, which I've provided for your reference, did have a six-month expiration date on the ordinance, which means it would expire tomorrow, October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty. At this time, I am seeking the board's consideration to extend those temporary modifications for an additional six months. That could be done by a motion this evening. It would be an emergency extension of the ordinance. And part of that motion would also be for the board to authorize staff to schedule the required public hearing to make the change to the ordinance permanent.
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
If I'm not mistaken, under that, the would have to be under the chairman's signature. Not the county administrator's signature. Is that not correct? Because is that not under the emergency operations?
Well, at the end of the day, I mean, it's ordinance adoption, so it does. I think normally we have the chairman sign the ordinances.
Right. I just want to make sure we get the right one in there.
Yes, so tonight it would just be the motion to make the extension on, on an emergency basis, and then we would schedule a public hearing.
So moved.
Yes, under the county administrator's signature.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passing unanimously. All right, no old business. Department Director Constitutional Officer reports. Nothing? County Attorney's report?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
County Administrator's report?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, board comment?
I don't know if any of you noticed it, but in the social services report, there's an anonymous donor that came up with seventy-five hundred dollars to provide three hundred twenty-five dollar gifts, gift certificates for, you know, to provide food for people in the, in the county through social services. That's just one of the things that always impresses me about this county is how people will step up to help others.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to recognize County Administrator and several members of, of the staff that, that worked with him on an expeditious request to the state for some extra cares act money for broadband project. I think we, the opportunity opened up on a, on a Monday, and I think by that Friday, we had submitted a request. And a week later, we're granted the full amount of that request. And so I appreciate him taking the lead on that and, and all the staff that jumped in and and helped pull it together quickly. And it was one of those, it was a rolling set of awards. So if you, if you didn't get in line quickly, there was, you were gonna be in line maybe forever. And so just want to recognize him on, on behalf of the broadband authority and the citizens of the county for having taken the lead on that. So thanks.
Absolutely.
Definitely a team project.
It's interesting when you look at the, most of the time, it's a budget of adjustments in the, in the consent agenda. But how many grants that our staff is going out and getting for a lot of different locations? And we got some pretty sharp staff who's out there finding the opportunities and taking the advantage of it to, to get additional funds to service our citizens. And so I think that, that's, this is one of the, probably the more visible ones. But that we see them almost every consent agenda. We see something where, where some staffer has put together a grant request and now we've got something else we can do for the citizens.
Absolutely.
So, questions are, when does the first person go online?
We're gonna put it out to bid. Whoever, whichever person makes the highest bid, that's gonna, no. The, well, the first thing that's gonna happen is the, the hotspots are gonna get turned up. And the good news there, and that's part of what this grant is.
Right, but we're, we're digging holes in the ground all the time.
Oh, yeah.
So who's, who's?
I, I don't know where the first, first exact light up is gonna be. It will be after the first of the year because of all the things that have to come together. This, this is a construction part, project first and foremost. We're, we're, matter of fact, we had a meeting today trying to see how much we can accelerate this, but it's it, it just, there's too many pieces that have to come together. But I, I'll say this, soon after the first of the year, we should be lighting up, you know, neighborhoods.
Yeah, it's, I think, we're in that, we're in that stage where to the outside, it looks like we're not doing anything. But believe me, we are. And it, this is not a, you know, a fairy tale. This is really going to happen. And it's, and it's, it's actually, you know, this sounds odd, but it's, this project has gotten bigger and bigger as we go along, and it's picking up speed. And we're, it will burst into view here before too much longer.
We need a, some sort of an event when the first person can tap into a hotspot. And either sitting in their car or wherever they are, you know, the first one that is, then, we need to let the Orange County Review and every other place know that we've actually made something happen.
Well, and the hotspots will be up fairly soon.
Yeah, that's a matter of weeks.
Well, as I say, the first time you got somebody who's now using our, our fiber optic and are using a, the hotspot. I think that's just a, an event that, that will make the citizens understand that really a lot of things are going on.
I think there is some confusion that the hotspots are some sort of last minute substitution for, for fiber optic. And they aren't. They're in addition to it. They were brought about because of, of a lot of things, but because of this bizarre year that we've had of, that, that they've, they've come along as they have. But the, the, the fiber in the ground is, is still going in the ground and will continue to do so.
And it gets more service sooner.
Yeah, and those hotspots wouldn't exist if it were not for the fiber in the ground.
Right, right.
Well, the, the, the fiber in the ground and all of the work that was done on the electronics, and our president said Equinix and so forth. You know, we, we, we're actually passing light now between us and Culpeper. That, that, in the, in the testing phase, so that's going on. Were it not for all of those activities, we couldn't have applied for this, this grant because we couldn't have performed.
There would have been spots, but they wouldn't have been hot.
And on that note, any other board comments?
I have one, and it is actually for Alan Saunders from VDOT, who, by order of the state, he's not appearing in public, or any other VDOT employees at this time. Old Office Road has been a constant supply of phone calls for me for a very long time. And the, the first section of it is completed. And instead of getting calls where I get to set the phone down for thirty minutes and come back and hear the same thing they were saying thirty minutes before, it's very short phone call saying, thank you, thank you, thank you. So just wanted everybody to know that Alan has, through this interesting year, gotten, first section of Old Office Road paved ahead of schedule.
All right. Next are informational items, and then, are there any appointments to boards, commissions, or committees?
Uh, yes, I'd like to reappoint Doug Rogers to the Economic Development Authority.
Yeah, I'd like to go reappoint Bill Hager to the EDA also.
All right.
I'd like to appoint Daniel Rogers to the Airport Commission. And are we still, the Parks and Rec Foundation, have we been in hold, been able to get ahold of Mr. Anthony and Mr. Liam?
I would not contact with them.
Okay. Yeah, if we could contact them and make sure they want to continue. I think they do, but I'm not a hundred percent certain.
All right. With those motions, is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They all pass unanimously? Good. Now, next is our calendar. We have consideration to schedule a public hearing for SUP twenty dash oh one, Mid-Atlantic Pyrotechnics Art Guild on Tuesday, December first, at seven P M. Consideration to schedule a public hearing for rezoning twenty dash zero two, Storeland LLC from C one to C two for self-storage facility on Tuesday, December first, at seven P M. Third one is consideration to schedule a public hearing for SUP twenty dash zero three, Storeland LLC self-storage facility on Tuesday, December first, at seven P M. And lastly, but not least, schedule a joint meeting with the Healthcare Commission on Tuesday, December fifteenth, at six P M. Is everyone good with those?
Well, Mr. Chairman, on thirteen D, Lee, maybe you could comment on this. I'm not sure we can do that.
I wondered about that.
Right now, the building is still completely shut down to all outsiders, basically, is the best way to describe it.
I would suggest that maybe we just.
As opposed to making it a meeting, can we do just for the board members to, I guess not, because it still needs to be a public meeting.
Yeah, I, I would suggest that we table it until such time as.
Let us try to get some more information by, by the next meeting.
I would like, I would like to at some point give the recognition of their fiftieth year and their, and being in the top ten of the state. I'd like to do that sometime this year, and I'd like to do it at the, at, at the Dogwood so that all of their staff gets a chance to see our resolution in support of them.
Maybe we can bring some alternative method of, of doing that from a full in-person, because I know.
Yeah, I, I, well, I mean, there could be, there could be some kind of, of event specifically. And it could be done outside.
Outside, that might be the.
You know.
Yeah, let, let's, let's work something like that. I think that would, that would be good. And do it at a time when, when their staff or at least their department heads can see what they've, what they've accomplished, or the fact that we recognize what they've accomplished.
I would do it before too much longer, before it gets brutally cold outside.
Yes, yes.
Late December, January, February, it's, might not be a good time.
Let's, let me talk to Pam and see if we can schedule something sooner.
Could, could we tentatively schedule it for December first in the early afternoon, maybe? That way, do that and then come for the board meeting.
All right, let's, let's see if we can do something like that. Oh, that sounds like a good idea.
Okay.
All right.
Very good. All right.
Fennelback A, B, and C.
Yes, we will scratch D. And is there a motion to schedule those three?
So moved. Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, passing unanimously.
Gonna be a busy night.
All right, at this time, I will open the public comment period. Is there anyone from the public here that would like to speak during the public comment period? Seeing number one, I close public comment period.
Boy, reminds me.
And at this point, Mr. Lottie, would you please?
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss enclosed meeting the following. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, promotion, salaries, disciplining resignation of specific public officers, appointees, and employees of the public body with respect to human resources and planning openings. And whereas pursuant to section two point two thirty-seven eleven A one of Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County is hereby authorized to discuss your four state matters in closed meeting. Need that as a motion?
So moved.
Second. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are now enclosed.
He's anxiously waiting my arrival, so he can go get his bed. Oh. Cause he's, he's moving back home.
How is he?
Members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. Goodman?
Aye.
And Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Five zero.
Okay, we're back in open session. Uh, Mr. White, did you have a question?
I, I did, I was going to ask the county minister if there's an update on our, uh, newly reformed Economic Development Department. Was, I've seen some staff movement, uh, and relocation, so is there anything you can update us on there?
Certainly, Mr. White, uh, thanks for bringing that up. Um, uh, I think, uh, for some time, uh, there, there'd been, uh, uh, an understanding that economic development and tourism would relocate to the, uh, the, the former Clerk's Building, and, uh, I'm pleased to say that, uh, that's taken place. Uh, we had had some discussion about the position of Economic Development Director. Uh, that was open, as was the project manager position. I was able to recruit, uh, Rose Deal back to the county, and she filled the, the project manager role. Uh, and as we had further conversations about what we, what we need here and, uh, you know, how many folks we need to, to do these jobs, where, where we've landed is, uh, I have, uh, promoted Rose to be the Orange County Economic Development Director. Uh, and, uh, we're reorganizing so that, uh, tourism, uh, will come under that umbrella. Uh, Lori will retain her position as, uh, Tourism Manager, uh, and have, have all the program responsibilities that she's previously had. But she will be, uh, in that, uh, combined, uh, Economic Development and Tourism, uh, function. And then Susan Turner, who, uh, had been our, one of our, you know, our, our deputy clerk and, uh, worked very closely with Allison, uh, here, uh, and, and stepped up to fill in while, uh, Allison was on maternity leave. Uh, she, um, also was our Economic Development fill-in, uh, liaison. While we had no one on board, uh, took a liking to that work, and, uh, she has agreed to accept the, uh, position over there as the, um, Economic Development and Tourism Assistant. Uh, so, so that's, that's the organization over there. We do also have a, a currently an intern that, um, Lori was able to secure, who's a student at East Carolina University, but is from, from our community, and, uh, is, uh, work, I guess she's doing her schooling remotely, so she's happy to, to, to work here and, uh, add further to the capacity. So that's the current group over there, and I'm very excited about it, and, uh, everybody's, uh, raring to go.
Great. Good.
Yeah, thanks. Good.
All right, if there is nothing further, I would entertain one more motion.
So moved. Second.
Aye.
We are adjourned.